Put your game face on here, let's go.
Okay, here we go.
Good morning. I call to order the September 1st, 2020 meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here. I see you please stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the citizens' input, a portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. We'll move to the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the minutes for August 25th, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, approval of public forum agenda. Does anyone wish to amend or correct this? Seeing none, the consent agenda will stand approved. We'll move to action items, item number one.
RFA number 207-20, K-Work Voting Delegate Trustee Nominations, Marilyn Lamer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning Marilyn.
Good morning Commissioners. Annually, K-Work requests us to designate an elected official as a voting delegate and an alternate delegate to represent Saline County at the KAC Annual Conference. They are also requesting nominations for an at-large trustee for the K-Work Board, that part is optional. K-Work's annual meeting will be virtual this year and it will occur on October 14th and it will happen directly after the KAC Virtual Annual Conference. And so the actions requesting today is to designate a Saline County elected official as a voting delegate for Saline County, designate a Saline County elected official as an alternate delegate should the delegate not be able to attend, nominate an elected official from an eligible member county on the attached list to serve as a trustee at large or take no action. The recommendation is to designate a voting delegate and an alternate for Saline County. Item number two, which is to nominate an elected official from an eligible member county, that one again is optional.
Okay, normally I would say that the chairman should probably be the voting delegate, however with my position as a member of the KAC Governing Board, which is the one that's presenting this, I think that that responsibility should go to someone else on the commission.
The timeframe of that day, I mean is it an all-day event or is it just the voting at the first?
No, I think it's going to be an abbreviated meeting. They did not give the details on how long the meeting will be.
Let me respond to that, I know a little bit about that. They will have, or they are putting together, and I've seen it, and I can't tell you what it is right this second, but it will have time slots for each and everything. So in other words, if there's something that supposedly to go from nine to 10 and it only goes to 9:30, then they will, the virtual part of it will stop and you know, that way if someone sees something they want to attend, they can go to their computer and attend it at the designated time. So whenever that time is, will be reflected in their agenda, if that makes sense to you.
Right, when they have the actual conferences in past years, I believe that K-Work Board meeting lasted an hour or two.
And that is?
Commissioner Sparks, you attended last year.
Yep.
You were the delegate last year.
So that would be a responsibility of a commissioner to be virtually connected. And if that's okay, then I would nominate Roger as the vice chairman to be that voting delegate for Saline County.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? That's been moved in second that we designate Roger Sparks as our voting delegate for the KAC Annual Meeting. Further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries.
And will you be also selecting an alternate delegate just in case something should come up and Commissioner Sparks could not make it?
I would be happy to be that person.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Shadwick nominated himself to be the alternate and was seconded by Roger Sparks.
I'm a good B-teamer.
There you go. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that motion carries.
I'm the JV.
So now we're at a...
The last item on there is you have the opportunity to nominate an elected official from an eligible member county to serve as the trustee at large. That one has a little bit more time commitment to it. There are several counties on the list.
Marilyn, do you serve on that board?
No, it has to be an elected official.
Oh, it has to be an elected official, excuse me.
Yeah, yeah. When I did reach out to legal counsel at K-Work, they did say that they had somebody that was interested in doing it but was still considering it. So if you do not take any action on this, somebody else could nominate that individual.
I don't have an opinion on this one, how important it is for us to have someone there or not, or I don't...
And it has to be from another county?
No, it could be from Saline County.
It could be from Saline County as well.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
If we don't have any names available, I'd take the, just pick a name out of a hat.
Does this need to be done today, or?
No, it does not.
You know, I would, I mean I kind of like to be represented on these boards and I think maybe we should take an inter-office poll if we could to see if maybe the clerk or treasurer or any other elected official might be interested in that position and then bring it back to us next week for a nomination or you know, potential suggestion.
And if nobody is interested, it just drops?
Yeah, if nobody's interested, I'd say we, I mean, I don't know what about any other surrounding counties that might have expressed an interest and if they have, they should let us know, but...
Yeah, there's quite a list of eligible counties on there, so I imagine they'll probably get somebody interested in serving.
Okay, well I think it does service them well though if we can get one of our elected officials to be on that board, so we might check that out.
Okay, I'll ask around.
All right. So that, let's see here, I guess we do need a, an approval of the RFA itself, which we've already, that's not true, we're on the, we're on the K-Works one. So we're taking no action there is what it amounts to.
Well, the RFA does include designating a delegate for Saline County and also an alternate delegate, so you have made that, that motion.
Yeah, we did the motion without the RFA numbers attached to it, so we have approved RFA 207-20 and we designated Roger and Mahdi as alternate and the designated person. All right, we'll move to informational items after I get done talking about all of that. Item number one.
Road and Bridge Update, Darren Fisher, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning Darren.
Good morning.
This is our Road and Bridge Maintenance Division update. I just kind of let people know what we've been doing for the last couple months along the way I plan. We did assist the voting booth delivery in August. We did trash pickups and debris removal. We did have an asphalt entrance repair.
Turn your mic on.
This is an asphalt entrance repair where we had to get some water from a hydrant and we did damage to this gentleman's driveway. This was on North Street. We did replace 13 crossroad and entrance culverts. This is at Watkins Road west of Miller. This is an old concrete culvert that had separated and collapsed. This is at Miller and Watkins, there is actually a culvert in there that had filled up with sediment and wasn't any good anymore. This is Holmes Road north of Waterwell Road. This was actually, actually Roger called me on July, July 4th.
It was the day before.
Day before July 4th, there was, this culvert here had deteriorated and undermined and there was a big void under the road and it had collapsed. This was a concrete box that somebody at some time or another had added a culvert to and then poured a headwall on. So in running the drainage area, we discovered it could be just one large culvert. So the excavation was considerably large because of those two structures being replaced with just one. And we did pour some concrete over the top of it since it was on an asphalt road, so it wouldn't settle. And then this is the finished. This is Campbell Road west of Simpson. There was a waterway coming into this culvert and it had, it had collapsed also. So we did some ditch work and as you see here, there's these AT&T phone pedestals here. One of the things we deal with every day is buried utilities. This is Salinsburg Road and Ohio Street. This flow line of this water, there was, there was no culvert here, so this drainage here would just pool right here. So what we did was we put a culvert in right here because this right here is actually a road, so there wasn't any way to put a culvert here. So we put a culvert here and then we did some ditch work with the motor grader to get the drainage to there. This is Crawford Street east of Amos, this is after one of the heavy rains, the road had washed over the road and because the culvert had a hole in it. This is Amos and Cloud Street, this is an intersection of two earth roads and every once in a while we do run into a place that there is no culvert but probably should have had one. The drainage here is to the west and every time it would rain hard, it would just run across here and eat that intersection out. This is Cunningham Road south of Magnolia, this is a gravel mile that we reshaped and added aggregate and rebuilt. This is a bridge up on McGovern Road north of Paulson and it is back in a closed minimum maintenance road, but it does provide access to a couple of properties back there. One of the issues with this bridge is we, we get trash, this is on the Mulberry, and then when it washes out, the ends of the bridge fall in. And so if you look at this picture, you can see this driven piling up here, well it had all started to rot out and rust, so when the water came through here fast, it would take all the dirt that was off the end of the bridges with it. So we excavated the bridge ends and put this galvanized sheet piling in there. We went lower than the existing there and we left the old, the old structures there. We did not remove these, so when these do rot out eventually, there'll be this new back wall behind there. And then so we did some, repaired some box culvert, this is a wooden box culvert on Muir Road north of Cloud Street. This is a wooden structure and the stringers underneath were broken in multiple places, but with what was crossing that, the back wall was good. So we took the wood off and replaced it with these, these galvanized steel beams here and this bridge decking, and these were purchased off of Purple Wave several years ago. Remember, I came and asked for an RFA to purchase these beams and decking. And we did put the gentleman's little things back on there, that was important to him. And then we put aggregate surfacing over the top of it. This is on Powers Road north of State Street. After a heavy rain, you can see that it came in and it, this wing wall here had deteriorated and the water came around here and was starting to eat in the road. So we excavated that and put in a laminate post and bridge decking. And this bridge decking actually was recycled, harvested from the closed bridges several years ago. We kept all of that material and we recycle a lot of stuff. So we have, this is a box on Farley Road east of Kip. This was just field drainage, so as we look at areas, we think who has access, what's the type of access and what's the lay of the land? And since this was just field drainage, we removed this, it's an earth road, so when it's rainy and muddy, you can't get to this box. So we removed that box and made, did some earthwork and made a little low water swell through there, so when the water comes through there, it'll just keep on going. And then when it dries out, the people will be able to get to their property. Very good candidate place for a low water crossing. This is Hobbs Creek Road, this just shows you some of the work that the rural patrolmen have been doing after harvest. Fortunately, it's been dry enough this year. We go in there with a motor grader to clean the ditch and just put the dirt back in, out into the field. It's a very cost-effective way of cleaning ditches. And this is Muir Road south of Forstenberg, here's another one where the dirt just went back out into the field. We did repair and replace 271 signs and we have started our countywide pavement marking. We hauled 8,372 ton of rock, 1,935 ton of AB3, 6,345 ton of sand and 1,005 ton of what we call plant waste. That's material we purchased from the asphalt plant at a very reasonable price. We have plans to replace about 30 more culverts. We're going to start rebuilding the roads in Sundowner West. As late as it is in this, in the season right now, I imagine we'll probably just do the roads this fall, the one road that goes all the way around Sundowner West and then do the interior roads in the spring. We have 650 ton of aggregate to haul, 1,537 ton of sand and 405 ton of AB3. Because it has been dry, we've been able to make some headway catching up with our aggregate haul. And we have started our fall dura patch, which is prior to sealing, we go around and patch the holes. And our budget, budget items are pretty much in line with the historical averages.
Darren, thank you for the update. I want to alert you of the fact that I'm still getting calls periodically about the type of gravel that we're putting on the road or a new, new rock that we, because of people damaging tires and ruining tires. Have we been able to come to the, to a conclusion with the providers of that material as to is that what we really want or whatever?
Well, next year when we do our bids for aggregate, I'm going to, I'm going to get an alternate bid for, for smaller cleaner rock and the commission can make a decision that way.
Well, I think our decision was a mistake this last year, that's for sure, based on the number of calls that I've gotten. As a matter of fact, I was one of those people that, that lost a tire to that rock that was out there on the road, so I know it's, I know it is a real issue, so. Okay, other questions or comments from Commissioners?
How's that new broom working out for you Darren?
It works well. They're striping and it is, works good.
I saw it in action, so.
All right, if no one else has anything, thank you for the update.
I was just going to...
Go ahead.
Something I would like to look at down the road is when we, when we go out and we put out for bids that on a culvert thing or a large bridge is that, you know, we always put in there that they have to seed things and plant grass and stuff, but when the county does it, we don't have to do that. Why, why is that?
If it is a large project, we seed.
Oh, okay.
You know, there's a difference between seeding next to residential and seeding out in the county. So if it's just a small project, most residents just want to put their own seed out there. What we seed with is just an annual rye, just to get some cover.
Well, in your respect though, you talked about how much percentage of broom and how much of this and how much of that, so the grass looks like you've got stuff in there that will continue to grow over the period of time. And I was just curious because it's like when we don't, all I see is pretty much is weeds and trees growing back in those areas that we don't seed nothing in.
And we do seed large projects, small projects we don't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you Darren.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
County Commissioners' Update.
Morning Phil.
Good morning, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. Few items to update the commission on. First regarding our radio communications project. Commissioners will remember that this is a project that we've had on the books for some time. We issued an RFP and were evaluating proposals and then got delayed a little bit with the pandemic, but ended up having a special joint meeting with City of Salina Commission and the bodies agreed by consensus to go ahead and negotiate with the top two firms and those negotiations have now concluded. We do have a recommendation and there will be another special joint meeting, your commission and the Salina City Commission, next Tuesday, 10:30 over at the Chamber Annex. And we are also working on financing options for you all, which I hope to have in front of you two weeks from today. Next is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, as you will recall, this is the $11,026,434 that the state passed down to us from the Federal Cares Act and we submitted our plan for spending that money on the 14th of August. And the state last Friday informed us that they hope to have decisions on the plans out to counties this week. So we are anxiously awaiting that. In the meantime, I've gotten quite a few of the documents back from the different entities that were part of that plan and will be bringing a package to the commission for those. The third item for today is the jail outreach on the jail election for this November. Of course, your commission approved putting a measure on the ballot on November 3rd, asking voters to approve a construction of a new jail and a half cent countywide sales tax to pay those costs. So we are moving forward with trying to inform the public more about that. Yesterday, we approved a proof for a flyer, which is also available on our website and we'll be getting some of those printed up, distributing them to all the different county departments, giving some to each of the Commissioners for you to distribute as you go on speaking engagements. We're working with Salina Media Connection on a video and I would also remind and encourage everyone in the public who might be interested to go to our website and sign up. We do have a list of folks who get updated when we have new information and we do have the ballot language up on the web page as well. And finally, I would just like to remind everybody that next Monday will be Labor Day and county offices will be closed. That's all I had for this morning, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Anyone have anything? Announcements? If not, it looks like next up is executive session for non-elected personnel and this is coming from administration?
Yeah, the first item would be non-elected personnel regarding Fire District Number Five, and do you have an estimated time on that?
Yeah, we could probably start with 20 minutes and I think that'll be good enough.
20 minutes, did you say?
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to Kansas Open Meeting Act for 15 or 20 minutes and reconvene in this room at 9:45. This is regarding RFD Number Five.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second that we move into executive session for 20 minutes for non-elected non-elected personnel, Rural Fire District Number Five. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, we are in executive session.
And we will move to item number two, which is non-elected personnel executive session. Again, I would ask that will be with Maryland and it would be for 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10 minutes from now, 9:58.
Second motion.
Then moved the second that we move into executive session for non-elected personnel to last for 10 minutes. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We're in executive session for 10 minutes.
Okay, we are back into regular session from employer-employee negotiations and I will add that there is no action taken once again. So at this point in time, I would take an emotion for adjournment.
I moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We adjourn. Thank you for watching.